Well, you all are doing that. Give me one second while I actually hit the gavel and make sure. All right, audio any better? I hear Jeff coughing. You guys need Paul Achen, Archbishop? Just give us just thirty seconds on it. Sorry to delay this.
Yeah.
He's a nice guy. Did you? All right. Yeah, he's. What is that?
Tom.
Sorry. We'll go with it. I think it's gonna be as good as I'm gonna get it. All right. We're going to call this meeting to order. Today's date is August the fourth, twenty twenty five. This is the Telside Common Council meeting. Everybody could please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. You may be seated. Just want to start by apologizing. If anybody's watching this on live stream or watching back in the video, we are having a little bit of audio problems. So as you give reports, maybe talk a little louder. Hopefully that helps if some degree. We'll try to get that fixed. But it is recorded on a tape recorder as well. So if somebody needs to see the audit at some point for some reason, it would be available through that way as well. So. First item is adoption of the agenda. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda as presented? Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Motion made by Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Gerald. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, presentation of minutes from your July seventh meeting. Are there any changes or corrections to those minutes as presented?
Motion to approve as presented.
Motion made by Larry. Is there a second? Seconded by Mike. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right. Next item is approval of accounts payable vouchers. So, believe, have you all had a chance to look through those? Also, do you think I've looked at them? Is there a motion to approve? So, motion by Phillips. Seconded. Was that Brian?
Yeah.
Seconded by Brian. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is comments of citizens. Are there any citizens that are not on the agenda? Would like to come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the minutes, please. Saying none, we'll go on to committee and war reports. We'll start first with Larry Kleeman. Also, your partners in pride as a reminder.
Okay. I attended, um, July eighth, I believe, a meeting that was at the Hamilton Library. Um, it was put on by Paddle Perry, and they had the executive director of the Ohio River Way, which is an organization that is, uh, establishing, um, the Ohio River, creating paddle stops along the way. And at this point, uh, they have established stops from starting in Ashland, Kentucky, to West Point, uh, I think, West Point, Kentucky, which is just on the, uh, west side of Ole. So their next phase will be getting a downriver partner. And what they do is they arrange a point about every six miles, uh, along the river where paddlers can get access to a camping area, uh, or resources, um, and then they, they promote the, promote the events. It was a very interesting discussion. Um, I think, um, Indiana's, uh, probably a little bit behind in this. Uh, I know Kentucky, their general assembly, I believe it was last year, established all the counties along the Ohio River, designated them as, uh, destination counties and are working actively to try to, uh, extend this route, uh, through the state of Kentucky. So, it's very interesting presentation. I think, uh, I think we continue to lose opportunities at Telside because we don't have a boat ramp, a boat spot where people can, um, access the town from the river. Um, and interesting presentation and, uh, these people really have it going. On the seventeenth, I attended a plan commission meeting with Bryant, uh, where we approved the site plan for the new car wash, uh, that's being constructed on fourteenth and Fourteenth Street and Highway sixty-six. Uh, on July twenty-second, I attended a meeting, um, at Huser Heights Subdivision with, uh, the mayor was there, the water superintendent, uh, sewer superintendent was there to review the, uh, utilities layouts because there's, I think, six different utilities that are bearing their utilities underground. So there's a lot of digging going on, um, but the meeting went well.
Very well.
Um, then on July twenty-ninth, I attended a webinar here at City Hall with the mayor and, um, Connie Berger and Brian was able to participate in some of that regarding, uh, the wheel tax and excise tax, which I think we're going to discuss a little bit later on the agenda. Mayor?
Yep.
I'll save my comments for that. Um, then my partner in pride winner for the month of August is Wendy and Jim Beck at five forty-seven Ninth Street.
Okay, that's it. All right, thank you, Larry. Mike Finley.
Uh, Kathy and I got to work, um, a shift, four-hour shift at, uh, selling tickets for the Switzer Best Half-Pot Ticket. And, uh, as of about an hour ago, I was told it's up to fourteen thousand with, uh, five days to go. Of course, most of the money comes in the last day, but gradually gets more and more easier. Target is seventy thousand. Hopefully reach seventy thousand.
I think they can.
And, uh, I got to help, uh, I don't know if I did this in July or August, but I got to work with two of the, or three of the best burger grillers. Uh, they're, they just happen to be here in the room with us. Uh, and they, I've heard so many positive statements from customers. Uh, in fact, even we, uh, we took some kind of, uh, water liquid to the umpires like halfway through the game. And you thought it was like gold. One of them even said, "We, we don't get this kind of treatment anywhere." I'm glad to hear that, it's really. And, uh, that's it. And my partners in pride are Jeff, Christine and Jeff Leahy at thirteen twenty-five Winkle Reed. They've done a nice job on their house and, and the exterior new roof. And, uh, what's the outside, the topography, they planted trees and it's really nice.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Up, Simpson.
Hey, uh, not too much today. I did get to meet Paul Achen, the Archbishop up in Seattle. So he knew who I was because I looked, he said I looked like my dad, so he knew exactly who I was.
Is that a good thing?
I don't know. I don't know.
No, it's a great thing. As long as he didn't preface it with, "I'm sorry," you're okay. Your dad's a great man.
But yeah, he's an Archbishop up there in Seattle. So I, he owns a house here in town. So I guess someday, if the church lets him retire, and then we'll go ahead and make him the, uh, partners in pride for this month at seven forty-seven Tenth Street.
Great, okay. All right, thank you, Phillip. Brian Steen.
Okay, I was, uh, at, of course, we were at the planning commission meeting about the new car wash. Uh, that was a good meeting. Your dad does a good job sharing that too. Uh, did not make the LEPC meeting this month. I already had another appointment. And, uh, was at the wheel tax webinar, which we're gonna talk about after a while. That was on the twenty-ninth. And my partners in pride for August is Mr. Kevin Baumgartel at six one six Twenty-Second Street. And Kevin does a great job keeping his place really nice all the time. I mean, winter, summer, it looks good. That's it.
All right, thank you, Brian. Joe Gately.
My partners in pride is David Jane Arnold at fifteen forty-seven Thirteenth Street. It's on the corner there. Oh, about forty flowers and they keep, keep it going good. I've been on vacation, so I haven't made any of the extra other meetings. After I got stuck in Seattle.
Extended vacation. There are worse cities to be stuck in than Seattle.
Yeah.
Well, he had other ones he visited on the way home. Multiple.
Yeah, coming back home. We got, we left, we were coming back, we got stuck.
This is a story to add to your vacation. So, any statements or comments from the city attorney or clerk treasurer?
No, sir.
Okay, all right. Uh, my partners in pride this month is Onex Wealth Management. They're on Main Street. They're also our Switzer Fest Business of the Year. So, um, their building, if you haven't seen it, drive down Main Street, it's just, um, right off Tell. And it's a beautiful building. They, that originally was the Hess Electronics and.
STV sales.
Yeah, and he remodeled it several years ago, even maybe months even before this. And he put this beautiful facade on the front of it. It's got these really cool gas, um, porch lights on it. And it's very nice. And his daughter has the, uh.
Autology.
Yeah, the autology next door there. And it's just as equally beautiful. So they got two wonderful buildings and I'm very proud of them both. So, um, that's all I have there under that. So we'll move on now. Old business, which is none. So we'll jump right down to new business. And we've got, uh, school resource officer Martin here. And we also have the city attorney to help with this one too. Um, item is ordinance amendment to traffic code for the school zone. You may remember.
Bring the ordinance? Do you have it?
You didn't bring the ordinance?
Did not bring it over.
Well, any should have it, but I have it right here also. I don't have the ordinance number on it, but. That is the right one, ain't it?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay. So, um, you may remember sometime back, there was work on this, trying to, uh, clean up a little bit and I think add some things to it even. So.
I think we started working on this, uh, in twenty twenty-three maybe. Um, so it's kind of been floating in the ether a little bit. Um, Sergeant Martin reached out to me a week or so ago and said, "We're ready to go." Um, the, as you know, there is already a school zone along Sixty-Six or Twelfth Street. Um, so we kind of revamped what we had done, simplified and, um, changed, uh, changed, changed it such that our action would only involve, uh, Tell Street and Fulton Street, both of them from Eighteenth Street on the east to Tenth Street on the west. Um, and the net effect of a change in the school zone would reduce their speed limit from thirty miles per hour to twenty miles per hour while children are present. Um, I believe we interpret while children are present, uh, you guys correct me if I'm wrong, is it seven in the morning till nine in the morning and then two o'clock to four thirty? I only know because I read those signs when I drive to the office every morning through the existing school zone. So, um, but if anybody has any questions, we can certainly try to address those. Um, I know that it had been discussed at some length a couple of years back. Um, and this, so this would, in essence, establish a, the similar school zone, uh, to the existing one along Twelfth Street. This would be Tell and Fulton, uh, uh, Eighteenth to Tenth Street.
Okay, so council, do you want to, uh, go ahead and have first reading of ordinance number twelve twenty-six then? Motion by Brian. Is there a second?
According to my minutes, well, the minutes are on twelve twenty-six was on the yard place.
We're watching twelve twenty-seven.
What is the, uh, school zone on the highway there? R. Twelfth Street, yeah. Twenty-five mile, twenty-five.
It's twenty, it's twenty, it's a ten mile, mile per hour reduction. So we have the same reduction in speed limit. Our city street speed limits are thirty miles per hour, but thirty-five on Sixty-Six along the highway.
And they've also got those signs that remind you of your, of your speed that they've been working on and moving around, I think. Have they moved that one yet?
Yeah.
Okay, so Brian, you wanna kind of amend yours for the reflect twelve twenty-seven?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Gerald. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Jeff first reading of twelve twenty-seven.
Ordinance number twelve twenty-seven, amendment to traffic section of the Code of Tell City. Whereas there have been certain changes and conditions regarding traffic in a certain area of the city of Tell City, and the Code of Tell City should be amended to reflect these changes. Now therefore be it ordained by the common council of the city of Tell City, Indiana as follows. Section one, chapter seventy-four, schedule one of the Code of Tell City shall be amended to add as follows. A school zone is hereby established on Tell Street from Eighteenth Street on the east to Tenth Street on the west and on Fulton Street from Eighteenth Street on the east to Tenth Street on the west. The speed limit in this zone shall be reduced from thirty miles per hour to twenty miles per hour while children are present. Section two, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage by the common council of the city of Tell City, approval by the mayor and publication in accordance with Indiana law, passed and adopted by the common council of the city of Tell City, Indiana this fourth day of August twenty twenty-five.
Okay, so council, with the first reading of twelve twenty-seven, is there a motion to suspend the rules for second, third reading by title only?
Motion.
Motion by Gerald.
Sir.
Seconded by Brian. Any further discussion?
I've got questions. Um, so the signs that go up, do they say twenty miles an hour while children are present, or do they just say twenty miles an hour?
While children are present.
While children are present, yeah.
Then I think the while children are present should be expanded. Here's why. The band practices down there, two weeks in the summer, every night while school session is on. And those kids walk back on Fulton Street, taking their instruments back to the band room. It's dark. I think we're just mighty lucky that one of the band students hasn't been hit by a car, especially with the construction that's going on out here around that. That's on Fulton Street. On Tell Street, the football team has practice in the summer times. Those kids wander across Tell Street from multiple directions. They don't cross just in one place. Okay? So I'm not sure if that's a city problem or a school problem, but I'm concerned about that issue.
I remember when I played, we always went through that alley. Remember that mic when we knew that practice was wheel, we went through the alleys?
Yeah.
So I mean, it's a straight shot from the, from the swamp to.
I'll kind of yield to Officer Martin. He, he works with these students more than any of us in this room, probably knows it better than anyone, I would think. Uh, do you have any suggestions or?
So originally, whenever they developed the way I had this semi, Larry, and when children present being essentially whatever they're expected or there's an expectation, there's definitely happens practices. Jeff, you can double check me on that. Um, I know that there are posted times on Twelfth Street, but I believe by code you use the word children present.
I was, had you not brought that up, I was going to. That, that when children, when children present is pretty, pretty powerful catch-on.
And if that's okay, I, I do.
I mean, there's a lot of, there are a lot of activities out there. There's a lot of.
During basketball games.
Yeah.
You know, it is, it gets darker, which earlier.
Swim session.
And swim, yeah.
And volleyball meetings and on and on and on. So it's, it's just not, it's just not two hours in the morning and two hours in the evening.
Sure, I understand. Okay, uh.
And I, and I, and I think that's a very good point. And I, I think that when, when children, while children are present is a strong provision to, uh, provide for a extra layer of protection. Um, I, I trust Tell City Police to enforce diligently when it comes to that while children are present.
They're, uh, by loose elementary, they have a police car there every day. And we, I don't know if we need that for every day, but maybe, uh, the first month just to get people thinking about it.
We have a school resource officer, so that's good.
He was out there today in his, uh, Superman.
And they do, uh, I know, I've noticed, uh, an uptick in enforcement along Twelfth Street, uh, at the end of last school year. And I would hope at the beginning of this one. Um, and my, my additional hope would be that Tell and Fulton are gonna fall into that same, uh, category of, uh, some updated enforcement. The most, that's the most effective tool with any type of speed zone, work zone, school zone, um, is, is enforcement.
I think potential signs up too, if they help me.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Well.
And I think, uh, one of our initiatives on this is, is that this discussion, uh, is preceded by us making some public notices on social media page about these amended ordinance and the activity enforcement that's kind of followed a couple of months for that happening in the application by.
Yeah, it's gonna be pretty hard for people to say, "I, I missed the signs. I missed the social media. I missed everything." Um, and I, I trust these guys to.
You'd be surprised.
Issue warnings versus tickets when it's appropriate, but, uh, I think that excuse only lands a couple of times.
Just the sign, the sign of the light, you know, flashing is.
Well, I mean, this.
The digital signs are effective.
This is a step in the right direction, nothing else. If we have to go back and add more teeth to it later, if we recognize there's maybe loopholes that we were didn't anticipate, we can. But to sit back and not adopt anything is, isn't conducive, I don't think so. Great. All right, so we've had motion was made and seconded for suspension of rules for second third by title only. Um, any further discussion before we vote? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, second, third reading.
Second, third reading. Second reading, ordinance number twelve twenty-seven, amendment to traffic section of the Code of Tell City. Third reading, ordinance number twelve twenty-seven, amendment to traffic section of the Code of Tell City.
All right, so you've had, uh, all three readings of twelve twenty-seven. Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Motion by Larry. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mike. Any further discussion?
On the signs, they're gonna say, "Were children present?" Or is it just gonna list the times? When, when children are, okay, that kind of covers it, basically. Okay?
Okay, all right, uh, finish up discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right.
City put those up, correct?
Yes. Yes, they'll have to, it won't be, I mean, we'll have to order some, well, they'll have to locate it obviously to, for the post in case there's any, you know, electric utilities, water will have these. And then, um, I don't know what Jim's got in stock. He won't have some of that maybe, but we can make these signs in-house to, uh, to say what we, wherever we want. And he may choose to make it in-house, or it may be something that it's just as cheap to order that kind of signs. It's probably standard, uh, from our supplier. So, okay, uh, moving on to item B, wheel and surtax discussion. So as Larry and Brian, uh, brought up in the report, um, this is just for discussion tonight. There's no vote on anything. There's, there's nothing to vote on because we don't have anything prepared. But you, you don't get anywhere until you start having discussion on some things. So that's where we're here tonight. Um, Larry, I'll let you, you wanna kind of bring, talk about it a little more?
Um, I can.
You had some ideas, that's why I'm.
Well, yeah, I, I can. Uh, basically, the, uh, general assembly in passing the budget bill this year, uh, Public Law one seventy-three, which was House Enrolment Act fourteen sixty-one, um, made some changes in the, um, highway and street funding programs, basically, including community crossings. And one of the things they did was, uh, this law allows municipalities of greater than.
Five thousand.
Five thousand. Uh, adopt a wheel tax and/or an excise tax, excise surtax. Um, and there are two different types of taxes, but they must be, as I understand it, must be passed together, um, when, when you, when you adopt them. And you also have to have a pavement asset management plan in place, which we do. That's what we use for the, uh, paving that we do. And the ranges on the taxes, on the excise tax, it can be a minimum of seven fifty, a maximum of twenty-five. And my understanding, anywhere in between those rates, that is, uh, the, the law just specifies the minimum and the maximum on the excise tax. On the wheel tax, the minimum can be five bucks, the maximum forty dollars. And these are fees that are applied on the registration when people get their license plate every year. That's when the fee is established and when the tax is collected. Um, if we want to adopt those taxes in order to implement it January first of twenty-six, we have to adopt the ordinance before August thirty-first.
January.
Of this month.
Yeah.
End of this month, basically. Um, and, and they made some changes in the community crossings program. So, um, which, as I understand it, there's gonna be less funding through community crossings and, um.
About a hundred and eighty million less.
Yeah, and more responsibility falling on House on Paper. Now, the, um, Connie sent out, uh, an email and I think the state association, somebody prepared an estimate based on the number of vehicles. And this applies to passenger vehicles, trucks, motorcycles, trailers, et cetera, et cetera. And it's broken down. And she emailed that out. I printed a copy out for me. And based on the number of registrations in Tell City, if we adopted, um, the, on the excise tax, the only, the excise surtax, if we adopted the minimum, it would generate roughly a little over fifty-eight thousand a year. If we adopted, that's seven fifty, if we adopted the twenty-five dollar tax, it would generate roughly a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars a year. Then on the municipal wheel tax, if we adopted the minimum, it would generate about fourteen hundred dollars a year.
How much?
Fourteen hundred.
Yeah.
Based on this production. If we adopted the maximum, the forty-dollar fee, it would generate eleven thousand five hundred bucks. So, if you add them both together, minimum to maximum range is roughly sixty thousand versus two hundred and, a little over two hundred and nine thousand. Um. Pardon me?
That'll come with us if we adopt the taxes. If we don't adopt the taxes, we get nothing. The city, the city.
Yeah, well, if you adopt both of these, that also, they don't know, they, they didn't really go into the formula for it, but we would be able to receive, I don't say additional fund, but what, remember if you had those adopted, you could receive this, but they's putting the money in this account that was supposed to wait. It was gonna distribute like twenty-seven and it's a more con, I don't, can't explain that quite yet because I don't know.
Well, one of the taxes, if, if, again, if we adopt it by August thirty-fourth.
Right.
One of the taxes will kick in January first of twenty-six, and we'll actually start collecting that. I think it's the smaller of the two.
Yeah.
Um, we'll actually start collecting that, I think, at the end of twenty-six or maybe in June or July of twenty-six. The other one, it would be at the end of the year, uh, before we get any.
Right.
But if we don't adopt it, I mean, you know, we just, a couple of months ago, through paving alleys, we spent, what, ninety thousand dollars on three or four alleys?
Mm-hmm.
Uh.
Yeah, and those are ineligible for.
Community crossings.
Correct.
These funds.
We could use these funds.
Yeah, you could, yeah. You could use these funds for that, you can even use these funds as part of your match for community crossings, and, uh, several other paving, I guess you would call it, projects, but.
I, I reviewed the, the, uh, PowerPoint presentation. I couldn't go to the, the presentation itself, unfortunately. And these funds are restricted to transportation, paving, those type of projects, though we, so we can't, we can't put them in the general fund and use them for whatever. This is gonna be our, what, we're gonna have diminished funds for community crossings, because the state cut a hundred and eighty million, which means we're gonna lose some of. We didn't get a hundred and eighty million, but we're gonna lose some of our piece of that.
There'll be less money, funds, than go around to support all cities and towns across, and counties across the state.
This, I think, and I can't put myself in a legislator's head for this, but I think is intended to somehow replace those. Kind of a backhanded way of replacing those, cause it wouldn't even come close to replacing dollar for dollar.
No, it, it could be part of that. So, obviously, we're not gonna adopt anything tonight, um.
There's more discussion.
Right, exactly, and that's what this is, this is kind of where this is, this is at, and, um, do you all have a copy of the PowerPoint? I can't remember if that got sent.
Connie sent it to me, and I could.
She did send, okay, I couldn't remember. I knew that which of it was, but for some reason I missed, so you've got that, um, look over it, um. Do you have any questions? You know, ask myself, me, or, or Connie, or Jeff, or any, you know, if another councilor has a question, just get your thoughts, is this something you want to consider? Cause if we're gonna do this, it's, um, we're kind of up against time.
Time, time is, time is of the essence, right?
Connie sent that.
Okay.
She sent that.
Okay, good, you got that, okay, I wanna make sure. It was a really, it was a really good program, um, put on by Aime, to kind of help explain that.
In the past, it hasn't been widely adopted in southern Indiana. Boon, Boonville, um, I know the presentation had a map, and Boonville was the lonely outlier in all of southern Indiana that had the wheel, the wheel.
And they may have just recently adopted it, we didn't.
Oh, no, they adopted theirs back in twenty seventeen.
Oh, really?
They had it for years, yeah.
We weren't, we tried to look that up that day to see how, if they had just gotten ahead and.
Yeah.
Got that, got recent.
Some, somehow they were at the, at the vanguard on.
Well, this is something that not just, uh, Talcity's not do, a lot of other communities over five thousand are doing the same thing. If they, if they wanna seize funding for their street roads and alleys, maintenance and paving and replacement and what happens.
It's the type of tax that would be, it wouldn't be collected by the city, it's gonna be collected by the BMV.
Right.
Um, with your vehicle registration, it's just a, you've all seen your registration card, all kinds of things on there. Well, there is a space for it. Most people in Talcity right now, those spaces have zeros. If we were to adopt this, the numbers that Larry mentioned, are the numbers that would go in your municipal space. The county can adopt a one.
They can.
And, uh, I do not believe Perry County currently has one, but the county can adopt one.
Yes, I do.
They have, who they do, okay. Theirs is at seven.
Seven fifty.
Fifty, and we've looked, that was incre, that was set at that rate in, Connie was the auditor.
Nineteen ninety-two, I think, something along.
I thought there was an amendment, maybe.
She said, she sent the ordinance first.
So, um, they too will have to look at this as, does it need to stay at that rate, or, or whatever?
Yeah, these are funds that are distributed directly by the state back to the city, so these would not go, this would not be like the city getting their portion of the county take on this.
So, that's what I was, the question was, the county already has that tax.
Correct.
I don't wanna be paying it twice.
This is completely separate from the county.
So, will, we still have to pay the county's portion?
Yes.
But we, but we get that portion still.
Yeah.
We'll still.
Your portion of, yeah, the city's ca, portion of the county's excise, wheel or excise tax would still come to the city. This is, the simplest way to understand this, Gerald, is this is in addition.
And if we don't do this, then we're not eligible for community crossings.
No, 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 we're still eligible.
We still be eligible for it, but I need, I don't, I do.
We don't have as much match money.
Well, no, I didn't bring my notes, Gerald, let me get my notes out on that. There's, you're still eligible, but it's, you weren't eligible for this, uh, di, the same amount, or, do you, do you remember them, Brian, they, they talked about that?
I think it was a di, it would be a different amount if you didn't.
And you didn't get this, this.
You didn't get this, go with this.
Yeah.
I definitely took it from just reviewing it as the incentive.
I didn't bring my notes on, I'm sorry.
I don't, I had that note, little notebook, I didn't have my notes.
Somebody needs to, I'm asking, someone to print all that out, we can break, just break it down, if we don't pass, pass it, this is what we get, if we do pass it, this is what we'll.
I can, I'll print out that PowerPoint.
I can tell, I can tell you what the, um, what the requirement is. In order to participate, in order to participate in the community crossings program, we must adopt the, what was called the low-hut tax.
What tax? Were there, were there a lane tax in there, a red two or something?
Yes, yes, that's.
Totally different?
That's the, which one is that? The lane mile direct.
Yeah, that was.
Distribution.
Correct.
If we don't adopt that, we're not even eligible to apply for community crossings. And that's, at, at the bottom of this page, I, I, um.
We do have, it, it, that's, that is correct. We have to, at least ten days before, um, we have to publish a notice of hearing, we have to have a public hearing. And we could then immediately adopt it after the public hearing.
My understanding is this has to be submitted to the state prior to August thirty-first.
Yes.
So, the bottom line is, it, I mean, if we pass it, we're gonna have more money for street road alley.
Correct.
And we can use that money towards community crossing match.
Correct, correct.
That's correct.
And we'll still get money.
From the county.
The county, they won't.
It does not eliminate those.
As of now, it does not eliminate that. Legislative could change that in the next legislative.
Next session.
Very easily, but as of now, no.
So, if we adopt this, then the county's not gonna get our funds, our part of money we get every.
No.
No.
Ours comes directly from the state.
This comes directly to the city.
Okay.
We control our own destiny.
I understand, I mean, you, one of your favorite things is we're always paying double here.
Well, no, Gerald, not, not in this case, because, uh, think about it, I mean, we've got city streets, but we also have county roads. And, and we all pay for county roads, cause we drive on county roads, but.
That's why I wanna make sure we get our cut.
Yeah, 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 exactly.
Okay, so Jeff, do they need a motion, or just?
I think nothing right now, I, what I can do, um.
Jeff, Jeff, I think they mentioned, uh, one of these organizations had a sample ordinance or something.
I think, I think they do. I'm got, first thing I'm gonna do is look at Boonville's, um, um, Boonville's so very similar to us, I'm gonna look at theirs. Um, but they, I did see a reference to samples as well, I'm gonna explore that as well. Nothing better than taking a look at what somebody else has done, instead of reinventing that wheel.
Well, they all take Boonville, those that was adopted before this bill was passed, so I don't know personally.
I would, I would wanna compare.
I'm not trying to tell you how to be an attorney.
Yeah, no, that, you're, you're, you're looking along the right lines. That's exactly how my brain's gonna work on this.
Okay, Mayor, so, we'll still get our, uh, funding we get every year from the state, we're just not gonna get as much. We get local street road money, we get.
Yeah.
NBA's money.
It's my knowledge, yeah, that doesn't change.
Yeah.
They didn't say that it did, and that, that could be a total different can of worms that they have not nipped out yet.
I think we're just working from the logical perspective, that the legislature did not appropriate the same amount of funds for community crossings, so inevitably, we're not gonna get as much as we used to.
I didn't see that changing, did you?
Yeah, and I, I don't know, I, I don't know how much they will, I don't know if the formula. Gerald, I don't know if we know if the formula for distribution of those motor vehicle funds has changed or not, so, I mean, there was some, there was a lot of stuff, like we're not actually, um, I'm just.
Ooh, yeah, they might have, yeah.
I'm just concerned, we, I mean, the cost of paving's not gonna decrease.
No.
And if we wanna continue to keep our roads in good shape, we've made giant strides the last five or six years. Um, I, I think we need to do this, and I think we need to go with the maximum rate.
And it's a, and it's a one-time fee, and this is not, you know, if this, if this were imposed, it's a one-time fee for every registration.
Every year.
It's not one-time fee every year, yes. It's not a monthly fee or anything like that. I don't want anybody out there listening to think, you know, oh my God, I'm gonna be paying twenty-five dollars a month or forty dollars a month. It's not going to be that. Um, it's simply a, a, a one-time registration fee.
And you also don't pay, some misunderstanding, even though it's called a wheel tax, you don't pay on the number of wheels, you pay per vehi.
Per vehicle, yeah.
Per wheel vehicle, yes.
That's why it is today.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, some people may confuse it times four, and I can understand that.
It is, it is.
They don't know.
You don't want a six-wheeled vehicle, that's.
Don't want anybody taking wheels off their vehicle to save money.
Have a lot of scooters around then, okay, alright.
But I will, I will definitely take a look, um, at sample ordinances, at Boonville's ordinance, um, there are a, a large number of, uh, municipalities that have these ordinances, so I'm gonna take a look.
Okay, alright, um, any other discussion after we move on to the next item? Alright, moving on.
There's a little discussion, but you're gonna get something together, and you may have to call a meeting.
Possibly, yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
To meet the deadline.
Correct.
But that one is not gonna go in effect until twenty-seven, is it?
Well.
The distribution.
To go and. Not pass it.
You still would have to pass it for.
Still have to pass it before August thirty-first, or it's gonna, otherwise, we're waiting another whole year.
And they both have to be passed together, it's like, the left and the right, kind of thing.
I can expect that just later.
Indeed.
Well, we'll see how it all turns out, it's, it's a different, it's a learning curve, it's something different, and, you know, sometimes that can be uncomfortable, but we gotta research it, learn it, and make sure, and see if it's something that's, that fits our needs and what our mission and goals are, so. Alright, moving on. Item C, health insurance discussion. Um, as you're aware, the, uh, it's kind of become a, I don't wanna popular thing, but it's become more common, it seems like, uh, communities, um, removing health insurance for, uh, city council members, I guess you would say more so, um, they can, I guess they're concerned now, part-time. So, back under, uh, Mayor Adams, uh, this discussion was brought up, and they had a legal opinion from an attorney out of Evansville that stated that it had to be offered, cause council members were considered full-time employees. That's what that legal opinion said. Well, ever since then, um, that's been six, seven years ago. It, it's been some time. Um, it has been, uh, brought back up, and more recently in the county, um, had a situation where they did do this. Um, at that time, they did have at least one council member, um, in the county that was receiving health insurance. I'm not sure about anyone else. Anyway, so that went on, and, uh, they did remove it, and that council member did, uh, file suit against the county to have it reinstated, and it went through several courts, appeals, and I guess Indiana Supreme?
It went all the way.
You're a lawyer, so you know these, these levels they go through, anyways. Um, ended up going to that, and they did, um, side with, is it the appeals court underneath it?
They affirmed the field, the appeals court decision.
Affirmed it, there you go, that's why you make the big bucks, but, um, decision to re, to remove it, and that it was legal. And so that's kind of been my, um, hang-up in my waiting thing, is I'd rather find out what's going on with that litigation before we would even consider opposing any of that, cause the last thing I would want is to see the city get into a lawsuit, potentially. And then, while the county's in the same lawsuit, and then still spending basically double taxpayer money, in a sense, you know. Uh, we do have the outcome of that now, so it's, and currently, as of last, middle of last year, we do not have any council members receiving, um, health insurance. Um, you can receive that, your costs, which I think council members, you know this, your dental and vision, but you pay that one hundred percent. It's not, we don't contribute to that, so I don't see that as a big as an issue. So, it's just something that was, wanted to bring up for discussion, um, if it's gonna be removed, right, currently, since no one is receiving it, this is the time to do it, so you're not rece, you know, removing a benefit that they may have thought they needed, or had to be, what, whatever reason, i- it's not gonna cause any hardship on anyone at this point, that's currently here. And, and to me, I think that's, that's a key player in it. Uh, it's a little different situation in the county, um, so, it's up for discussion, so discuss away. Um, if it is something that's gonna be removed, um, you know, the council can do it, I can do it through executive order, even. So, um, there are two, there's options served for that, but we do need to make sure we have our duck center roll before moving it, cause it kind of will tie back to the personnel handbook policy, I think, a little bit there. I just wanna make sure all the I's and T's are dotted across the board, not just vote to remove it, cause if we had to repeal something, whatever, I wanna make sure it's done right, not just rip it away and, then, oh, we didn't do this right, and then I go back and re-bringing it up, if something's on the agenda for six months, so. Council discussion, there's my little intro to it, uh, how about it?
I'm not in favor of removing it, I'm in favor of keeping our way, we are not part-time employees.
I would agree some probably.
Paid an hourly wage.
I would agree, some probably put more hours in than others.
No, 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 Chris, full-time employment isn't determined by the number of hours that you work, it's determined by the classification that you have.
Well, I thought twenty-nine, or thirty-something hours was full-time, was classified as that, but that's a HR thing. I, I don't know that part.
Uh, so, I, and it's not, it's not necessarily a benefit. I mean, a benefit, retirement is a benefit. We could participate, my understanding, we could participate in the PERC program, the council has chosen not to do that for whatever reason. That's a benefit, you know, because if you retire, you'll draw a retirement. Health insurance covers your medical expenses, keeps you from going bankrupt.
Okay.
It potent, and I've never participated in the city's health insurance program, okay? I could have, but it's a choice that I made, and I believe that people should have that choice. I believe health insurance, I believe healthcare is a right, not a privilege, and not a benefit. It's not like you get a check every month. So, I, I'm totally against removing that.
Fair enough. Any other comments from?
Yeah, my concern is that, uh, you, like, whenever I got elected, I had Obamacare marketplace, cause I was a small business owner. And what if we have two or three council members coming in next term, who are on Obamacare? And once you're elected, if you get offered health insurance through your job, which this is a job, then you cannot get the subsidy for Obamacare. So then your rate, if you kept Obamacare, would be fifteen hundred dollars a year, so you'd have to come to the city, if you get family plan, two or three people could eat up fifty to a hundred thousand dollars in city, city perks, um, city money.
I wanna say, Penny, correct me wrong, is a single plan, I know there's different, there's an A and a B, but a single plan's around eleven, twelve, some odd thousand, maybe? Can't remember, try to pitch on the spot. Yeah. That's okay, I, I feel like it's in that ballpark, I, I don't know, then, there's four different options for our employees, you can do employee, spouse, employee, child, and family, all of you, and independents. We have four options, um, and we're fully funded, we're not self-funded. We used to be fully funded years ago, Gerald probably remembers that, um, he's on council, and, uh, we switched to, uh, fully funded. So it's, it's, that helps in some ways, I think it's been a, more of a benefit, but, so. I'd say this is up for discussion, um, I'm not asking for any vote tonight. I, we, before anything, we voted on yea or nay, I, there's a lot of I's and T's and dots and crosses that I gotta understand to even consider, uh, how to do it. For or not, I just wanna, from my knowledge, I wanna know, so.
So, if we want the public to understand, if we go on healthcare, if we pay for that, we don't get that free, folks.
Correct.
There's no, you fully contribute, yeah.
Yes, so, I mean, uh, my age, I'm not gonna buy it.
Yeah.
I know Medicare, everybody knows that, that's okay. But Mike, it's not costing the city anything today unless they buy in, correct?
That's correct, yeah.
I mean, look, it's there, nobody uses.
I mean, look, it's there, nobody uses it, so it's not costing the city anything.
And why it was offered to council years ago, I'm gonna totally go out on a limb here and make an assumption, it was self-funded then, and to be self-funded, I think you have to have a certain threshold of employees, and I think that, maybe that was, maybe that five other council might have just gave them that extra two or three people they needed to reach that benchmark. I'm a totally assuming that was, like, I might not have been born when that happened, but, I'm look, I'm just, you know, why was it, maybe that's why, and it was a different time back then, but, you know, we are looking at budget cuts, you know? While nobody's on it now, any five of you could go on it tomorrow, if you wanted to, I think you could, I, I don't know what to keep you from it, but.
But you don't know what a person's, what's gonna happen in their life where you may need.
There's, there's life changes.
You got Obamacare, though.
Yeah, but I, in a way, I kinda agree with Larry, you, you almost have to give a person a choice, you, you know, this is what this country was founded under, having choices, and, and, you know, I, I kinda have to agree a little bit there, that, you know.
Brian, you campaigned on this.
But, you know, people, when they, when you think about stuff, Bill Phillip, when, when you think about, you see life different ways, you, there's other people have different situations than we do. You know, and we just, you know, everybody here, yeah, then, we don't have the insurance, but you don't know what's gonna happen, like you said, if somebody comes, if somebody comes in, in the office behind you, what's gonna happen? Would they have to come back in, into here and, and approve in, insurance for councilmen? I don't know, I personally don't take it.
If it's removed, yeah, they'd have to come back.
You'd have to come back, so, you could do that, you could, you could eliminate it. But that's not saying it wouldn't come back, but like Gerald said, you'd pay for it anyway, so it's not.
The next council could remove and change anything.
It's just available, it's not really free. Am I right, Chris? I mean, it's not really, you know.
I mean, the city contributes, um, I mean, we, I mean, I'll be honest, it's not a secret, we can, we pay ninety-five percent of the health insurance for all city employees, full-time, so, police, street departments, wastewater, doesn't matter, we pay ninety-five percent roughly, I mean, maybe point, ninety-five point something like that, but, yeah, and employees responsible for five percent.
I don't know, I just.
I mean, that's just in a nutshell, I don't know if anybody knew that or not, I mean, it is a, but, as you're trying to look at, recruit and retain employees, that's extremely important, that's very attractive for us, might, you know, retaining employees and recruiting qualified and business workforce.
If you're trying to recruit.
In the job market.
And retain city council persons, you know, you need that as motivation also.
It's, it's a, it's a tool, yeah, that could be, could be used, that's one way of looking at it. So, I'm not asking for an answer about, um, I just wanted to, I think it's important to bring it up, um, it's worth discussing, I mean.
And just because the Supreme Court ruling applied to the county doesn't necessarily mean it applies to us.
It may not, but it, I, to me, it gives us at least more guidance and an answer, I, I do like that part, but.
I haven't seen anywhere in an ordinance or resolution that we're even supposed to get.
It's in the personnel handbook, I believe, where it.
I've read it, I didn't see it.
It's in the handbook that we got from a, we went to the conference on training, it's in the handbook.
Well, um, I appreciate your advice discussion, if anybody had any other comments they wanna share on it before we move on, I don't, I mean, um, I plan to probably put this back on the agenda, um, in September, just for a final something, if we want, just, I don't wanna drag something out from meetings after meetings and not have an answer, you know, it's a yes or no, and I just wanna.
Well, and if we came for a vote today, I would probably vote to get rid of it.
Yeah.
But, it, it's, you have to give choices, and that's, to me, I think that is what we, what we miss in this country, is we don't have the choices.
I, I, I understand.
They have the option.
They have the option, yeah.
Well, I said, I just wanted to bring it up, um, so I will have it on September's meeting agenda, um, so we can just decide.
And a lot of us, well, depending on this budget work, we might not be able to pay ninety-five percent next year, we don't know.
It's, it's definitely, Connie and I have been working really hard, chief and assistant chief, we all worked this afternoon for almost two hours, and we still didn't get done.
I mean, bottom line is, we're, we're gonna take a cut somewhere.
Absolutely.
And we gotta, you know, and I think offering an option for insurance for employees, that's great, that's great.
Now, this isn't just for all employees, right, I'm sorry, I know, okay, this is, we're mainly talking about the elected council, I don't want anybody to think that we're taking it away from.
No, but I mean.
Okay, people misunderstand what we're talking about sometimes, I don't want them to, that, you know, Facebook that we're looking to take.
If you don't offer your council candidate something, you don't get very good qualified people, that's why we, that's why we kept it all them years.
And maybe we could look at.
If I have some incentive for, we decided to pair and do the job and get criticized and.
Well, and.
And calls, and it's part of the job, I understand that, and I accept that, but that's why we did it.
Well, and other options, maybe you could look at other benefits, I don't know what those would be, but as you're thinking the next month.
I wish we had PERF all them years, I'd be getting a little check.
Well, and maybe, and maybe that's something we can look at, I think the county offers their elected, uh, commissioners and council PERF benefits. I think, if I'm wrong, I, I'll be, you, somebody can correct me very easily and I'll.
It was, all the years I sent a pair, it was never ever offered to the council, never.
Right, so, maybe that's something as an incentive instead of that, it's a, maybe that's a trade for it, that helps out.
So, if I contributed to it, it would.
You do, yeah, well, yeah, they do.
It'd have to match somewhere.
Right now, you're not, now, if no one's taking it, insurance now, we're not, it's not costing us anything, like, literally, nothing, but it's a PERF benefit or whatever it was, but, and maybe there's neither, I'm just, I'm not saying I'm far against one of those, I'm just saying that it's something to think about for the next month, um, do some research if you want, that's fine, and I appreciate everyone's professionalism and calmness and discussiveness, I know it can be sensitive uh, to a lot, and I'm sure social media will eat it up, and it'll get out of hand sometimes, like it can, I hope people, it, it's okay to agree and to disagree and still be respected in this world, and that's, we've lost that almost every level on social media, people get on it and trash someone and say whatever they want, hurtful or not, true, true or not, and it's unfortunate, so, let's hope this doesn't end up the same way, because the last thing I'd like to see is any of us or the council just be publicly ridiculed and attacked for just a thought they had, and we should be, all try to be respectful, so, I'll get off my soapbox on that. All right, moving on to the next item, uh, item D, additional appropriations, um, you'll have that, sorry, let me pull that up, I gotta bury it in here, here we go. All right, Jeff, do you wanna handle this?
I can.
Who help?
No, I don't know the details of it, so I may need Penny's help, but, uh.
Well, I can help with some of it, Steve's here also, if there's any questions on it as well.
Here's what we are doing here, um, an additional appropriation for park utilities, um, with fifteen thousand dollars, um, Q cap development fund, uh, for the Ivy Tech air conditioner unit, which I would note from past meetings, that's got to be done, um, edit fund, capital outlays, um, three hundred thousand dollars, total cumulative capital development fund, three hundred thousand dollars, so, um, Penny, I don't know what you can add to this. Gotcha, so, this is, uh, dotting the I's and crossing the T's on the sports complex, uh, uh, I know Mayor's pretty proud of it, I'm pretty proud of it myself, so, not gonna, not gonna say anything bad about the sports complex.
We're gonna do, edit three hundred thousand and plus another three hundred out of community capital, is that correct?
No.
No, it's total.
That's going to community?
There, it's being transferred, yes, transferred from one to the other.
From one to the other, yes, yes.
Yeah.
For, for the sports complex?
Three hundred, yes, that's part of the, the.
That's what we're doing, that's the total.
Well, if we're being transparent, then we need to talk about this Ivy Tech air conditioner unit.
Sure.
Because that, that's a city-owned building.
That's correct.
That we leased to Ivy Tech for a dollar a year, correct?
Correct.
Ivy Tech is a state institution, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, we're spending forty thousand dollars of our local tax money to support the state of Indiana.
Well, on that, on that hand, yes, on the other hand, it is supporting local jobs in this community, uh, through nursing, through welding, and through all the other certificates and, that they offer, you know, you've got high school kids from Tell City, Paris Central, Hancock County, Kennelton, all around that are actually getting certificates before they, when they, before or when they're graduating, ready to enter the workforce right then, and those people hopefully stay in the community, become taxpayers, and grow this community, without, you know, when bargaining with Mayor, Ivy Tech was, they were out, they were moving, they were packing their box up almost, and through her hard work, and others, they were able to convince them to stay in Tell City and continue off that service to our residents, if not, those kids would have to either not receive those certificates here locally, or go elsewhere, and I for one, I wanna keep them here.
That's the overriding fear here, is that, uh, without, without this, these repairs, the air conditioning units out there, that Ivy Tech's gonna leave.
Well, I don't think it did, yeah, well.
I understand that, but the mayor just said, we want taxpayers to understand what the money's being spent.
Yeah, yeah, and that's, and that's a very good one.
Tell City taxpayers need to know that we're spending Tell City tax funds to support the state of Indiana offering Ivy Tech services.
Yeah, in order to keep them here, we're, in order to keep them here, then, this is the tough decision we've gotta make, I mean, we, we could say, let's not spend it and let it go, and then, as Mayor said, no welding classes, no nursing classes, no drafting classes, that, that.
No CDL.
No CDL, correct.
Wait, have we tried raising their rent, I mean, has that been approached?
We're in a, we are currently in the final stages of the current, but continuing to honoring the dollar rate for two years, Jeff, I think.
Yeah, too many, too many leads.
It's gotta go to the next person, but, yeah, we have not looked at entertaining and, and the increasing that, um, you know, would we love to get a collect more rent on that? Absolutely, would it be helpful?
I think, I think if we believed we had another tenant itching, itching to get in there at market rate, that this would be a easy decision for us, but I don't think we've got that, and Ivy Tech, for, in, in exchange for what Ivy Tech provides, I think that's where the calculus comes out on this. And, and if, if we let Ivy Tech go, this, I can assure you, needs to be done, for, for the purposes of this building, and for the, any taxpayers out there watching, the, the repairs need to be made, regardless of who the tenant was, whether they were paying a dollar rent or a hundred thousand dollars rent, it, it needs to be done.
Okay, all right, um, is there a motion to approve?
After that discussion.
For the additional appropriations?
Yeah.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Gerald, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Second by Brian, any further discussion? All in favor, six of five saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carried.
All right, moving on, we got transfers now, so, I'll drive this one for you, Jeff, to help.
Yeah, you take the three thousand dollar, way to go.
So, um, Penny, what was the resolution number on this one, I didn't get that, does she have that on there? Uh, the res, um, the transfer, sorry.
Transfers.
This is the one for three thousand, it's got the, it's the parks and recreation department. Twenty twenty-five dash sixteen, thank you, Penny, all right, resolution twenty twenty-five dash sixteen, resolution by the Tell City Common Council to make necessary transfers between classification and the general budget. Tell City general, excuse me, city general budget, parks and recreation, or, transfer, uh, from one one zero one zero one two three one six, uh, lead director to one one zero one zero one two one one five point zero 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 zero, uh, clerical part-time, three thousand dollars, within the parks and recreation budget, adopted this fourth day of August, twenty twenty-five, so, um, anybody have any questions on this, uh, this is, uh, clerical help seat for, for Steve and his, his office and his, his staff, in essence, um, a lot of it will be for, um, Heather, um, who has been very valuable, for those who have helped in the concessions, you've all met Heather, um, she is doing a fantastic job, but it's more than just helping the concessions, there's a lot more to it, she's actually been helping apply for some grants she's been working on and stuff, and I think by having her in that role, it's only gonna further help advance our parks and improving, so, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, motion by Gerald, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mike, any further discussion? All those in favor, six of five saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. All right, now, we've got.
I don't have that.
I don't, I'm kinda trying, Mike. Penny, do you have that salary ordinance part? Where it says, and then it's. She's got it, sorry, you have that handy, can you pass that down, please? All right. So, she's got that, it's ordinance three dash twenty twenty-five ordinance?
Yeah, three dash twenty twenty-five.
Oh, it's the mini mat ordinance, I see.
Amendment.
Amendment, okay, so ordinance number, um, let me have a discussion this really, so, um, as far as the clerical, and Steve, we have to make amendment to that salary ordinance, right? We adopted that last year, and that's what this is here, uh, it's general fund, parks and recreation department, clerical part-time, eighteen dollars per hour, that's what that's making that, it was.
Twelve fifty.
Twelve fifty. And more listed as seasonal help, I guess you could say, so you're establishing this, um, any questions on this, is there a motion to, for first reading?
Is it an ordinance or?
It is an ordinance, yeah.
It would be an amendment to the salary ordinance, just, just changing the pay rate for the clerical.
Motion to sp, uh, first reading.
Okay, is there a second? Second by Mike, any further discussion? All those in favor, six of five saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll crack it out.
It's a, it's a short one, I'll take it in the short case. All right, first reading, ordinance number, uh, three dash twenty twenty-five, amendment to the twenty twenty-five salary ordinance, six dash twenty twenty-four, approved by the city council, August fourth, twenty twenty-five, general fund, parks and recreation department, clerical part-time, eighteen dollars per hour. Is there a motion to suspend orders for second, third reading by title only? Motion by Mike, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Gerald, any further discussion?
That's, so the range is gonna be twelve fifty, or is it gonna be eighteen?
Uh, eighteen.
It'd be eighteen, okay.
Yeah. Okay, um, all those in favor for a second, third reading by title only, six of five saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, second reading, ordinance number three dash twenty twenty-five, amendment to the twenty twenty-five salary ordinance, six dash twenty twenty-four, third reading, ordinance number three dash twenty twenty-five, amendment to the salary, uh, ordinance, six dash twenty twenty-four. So, you've had all three readings of the audits, is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Gerald, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mike, any further discussion? All those in favor, six of five saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Yeah, I'm gonna pass that down, I wanna be so happy you already got our stuff signed, all right, moving on to item D, excuse me, G, dispatch funding, so, I added this to the agenda just, again, for discussion, but we're gonna, as we're working on budgets, it's also that time to have that meeting with the county, uh, for the, kind of the joint meeting, you might remember that last year, we had one out at the, uh, courthouse, but we still haven't resolved twenty twenty-five's budget, okay, so we, we gotta work on twenty-six, but resolve twenty-five, so, in order to do one, you've gotta kinda have the first one resolved, I think, mostly at least, so, do you have these, Penny, with you, can I? I'm gonna have, Penny's gonna pass out to y'all a, a document, I want y'all just to kind of see and, and, and understand, and I'm in no way speaking poorly of the county, so, I hope nobody takes it this way, that's not my intent. My intent is to educate and put out the information, so y'all can understand what's that, what's going on and where we're at, so, if you look at this, it's broken down up until June, so, six months roughly worth here, um, we invoiced them in January, seventy thousand, sixty-two dollars and forty cents. The county only paid fifty-two dollars, or, excuse me, fifty-two thousand, my, yeah, it's way up there, fifty-two thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars, so, a difference of seventeen thousand, um, that continued on into February, a difference of fourteen to March, a difference of twelve, April fifteen, May fifty-eight, June twenty-three, so, as of the end of June roughly, um, we've invoiced them five hundred and twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and sixty-four cents. County's only submitted payment for three hundred and seventeen thousand, twenty-nine dollars and eighty-six cents, for a deficit of a hundred and forty-two thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars and seventy-four cents. Remember at the last joint meeting that the council had said that they wouldn't pay anything, that they were gonna let the county be solely responsible, um, again, that never really got settled, it kinda just got dragged out a little bit, um, I met last year, even after that budget, with the auditor, David Achen at that time, he was the council president, and Connie, we all met, and, uh, we talked about things, never really got, um, a final answer, as far as, you know, working, you know, we were working together, so it's not their fault. never really got, um, a final answer, as far as, you know, working, you know, we were working together, so it's not their fault, it's, it's kind of just, I'll put the blame on both of us, even myself. So that's what they've been paying. Now, obviously July's, I don't anticipate it to be the full amount. There is a higher one in here, which one was that?
May.
May. Extra, uh, week in there, early, I think, is why I hit that one hard from what I remember, is that right Penny? You don't remember? Okay, sorry to put you in the spot. Sorry, but, uh, anyway, so that was the difference there, so what I, we need to schedule a meeting, in essence, to sit down with either, like, the council president, I mean, we, and I could meet with the county, um, council president, uh, whoever else we think needs to be in that room to kind of hash out some of these ideas. We could have our joint meeting, just do it all then, um, I'm just trying to respect everyone's time, because some of these could drag out several hours, and if that's what it takes, that's what it takes. Back in March, no, May, March, yeah, I believe that y'all might have seen a copy I sent out of some proposals, so, um, I don't remember the exact date, but, um, County Council President Kelly Harding, uh, myself, Chief Lo Allen, Susan Chief Flannan, I think was there, Commissioner Cole, is David Achen there? I think David Achen was there, uh, Connie, and Steve House. We all did meet, trying to resolve this, and, um, I wrote up a proposal just trying to have some middle ground, you know, work together. Uh, I did send out, they sent back some questions, and, um, we, I, I believe I answered them, so I, I mean, if I missed, then I missed them, but, um, what we proposed was a, what's the total budget? Nine, anybody say, I've talked about the increase, so the county currently contributes about, um, twelve percent, we'll say, of their, um, lit distribution, so eighty-six thousand towards dispatch. Tell City, Cannleton, Troy doesn't contribute anything towards that pot of money to fund it, right? So my thought was, whatever the county's contributing of their lit, uh, distribution, if Tell City, Cannleton, Troy would all agree to, you know, to contribute that same amount, that twelve percent, that at least makes that, that pie whole, if you know what I mean. So, it would be basically saying that the county's contributing eighty-six thousand, this Tell City would contribute fifty-five thousand, Cannleton would contribute twelve, and Troy would contribute six hundred and thirty dollars. And I can send this back out to the council for your review. That gives it sixty-eight thousand dollars. Well, that's not enough to still fund the deficit, right? So, next thing I did, the total proposed budget was, I broke this down a little while, anyways, um, didn't matter, whatever the difference was, I broke it down, if they came up with a shortfall of fifty thousand, seventy-five, a hundred, a hundred fifty, two hundred and, two hundred and forty-three thousand, um, I broke it down into population and had a contribution here, so, at worst case scenario, if we show up after, can, put, uh, adding in the, uh, the lit distribution, the budget came up fifty thousand short, Perry County would still have to contribute additional thirty-three, out of whatever pot of money they want, that's, that's up to them, I, I, that's not for me to figure out. Tell City would have to contribute another thirteen, uh, Cannleton would be two, Troy would be six, and then I went up to seventy-five and a hundred. Just trying to, and it may be somewhere in between those, it may be fifty-six thousand. I was just giving some twenty-five thousand increments and so forth, uh, breaks in it. Again, I broke it into population because you can't break it down by call. I mean, Cannleton may get four thousand calls in a month, where Tell City may get two. It's not normally the case, but they could have an influx in calls depending on any situation that could occur there. So I thought population would be the best way to break it down, uh, I don't know. This is just, I'm looking for a solution, trying to work together as a team, uh, show some unity here, and show our dedication that the city has for public safety and community. We can't contribu- continue to support this financially like this all the time, we know that. When I came in, uh, Chief would recall some, you. Now you're on the council and that happened, were you? You were, sorry. You'll remember, but, um, it was not a calm discussion. They got pretty heated, pretty nasty, uh, in some ways, maybe on social media, more so than in, like, actual public meetings, but, um, I like to see us try to keep this as civil as calm as we can. I, I'm confident we can do that, uh, but we've gotta, we've gotta come up with something, because as we look at this shortfall in funding, this is another situation on our mark that's, we're gonna have to figure out these cuts somewhere, and not that we're trying to cut anything, but it's not our responsibility to, to pay all this.
Not solely our responsibility.
Not solely, no, not really even at all, but we have been, and I'm not saying we wouldn't contribute anything, that's a council formally saying, no, but.
Is there any indication that the county is willing to participate?
I don't know, I, I hope so, I hope so. I sent this proposal, I worked.
Is there any, can they be forced to, or is it just a, please?
I don't know. I mean, the dispatch budget for twenty twenty-five that we proposed was nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, and two hundred and change, nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand. I know in twenty, let's go back to twenty twenty-four's budget. So, nine hundred and twenty-one thousand was our budget for twenty twenty-four, and then we put it, like, we, an increase of six percent, which brought it to the nine seventy-eight. You know, if you look at that, what we, uh, the actual expenses for twenty twenty-four was eight hundred and twenty, or, excuse me, eight hundred and forty-two thousand, well, actually, it was eight forty-three rounded up. It, it came in less than what was actually budgeted, so I'm confident, and I know our dispatchers and our department works very hard to keep the cost down, and this is not even a true reflection of all the really costs that goes involved in dispatch, so there are things that we might forget to put in there that we actually paid out that shouldn't have, so it's not like, these are just hard costs that we know we can add in there. There's a lot of smaller things that nickel and dime, you would say, aren't part of this. We just gotta come to a solution. This week's a busy week for everyone, and I don't think we could even get one advertised in time, but maybe the week after, um, I'd like to reach out to the county and schedule either a joint meeting, both councils meeting to discuss this, or maybe it's a thing if Gerald has, is willing or is able to, maybe a sit-down and see what we can come up on that, and then bring it to the council for consideration. It doesn't matter to me, whatever the council wants to do, those are just, those are only our two options, and we gotta get twenty twenty-six joint meeting anyway, so.
Just to refresh, remembering, Mary, you sent a, an email out to us on March the twelfth.
Yes.
Saying that you met, you, Derek, Connie, Philip, met with Kelly Harding, Randy Cole, David Achen, and Steve Fowler.
Yes.
On February first.
And that's where, I sent this out first of March-ish. I had, you know, we got busy and I had to fin- took time to just lock the door and finish it up, but, um.
So I haven't done anything since February or what?
They responded some questions, um, I know Connie was unavailable, I think she might have been at her conference or something, and I responded to, to the answers, or the questions, and I don't remember seeing anything that came back on it, I'm not saying I didn't miss it, it's very possible, um, but I just wanna get something resolved sooner than later. I, I wanna put this to rest, I don't want this to keep causing any turmoil between departments, I know it did that last time, it was very hard on our police and sheriff's department, and it, and I don't know why it wasn't necessarily on that, but just, there was a lot of feelings hurt, and I don't wanna see that happen this time. Um, but I wanna see it get resolved financially for Tell City taxpayers, you know, that we're spending the money that we were entrusted to, to use, and we're gonna get every dime we have to do anything.
I'd like to, I'll meet with them.
Okay, jointly, as one, all of us?
I'm not gonna have a joint meeting at all. What do you think, guys?
I, I don't oppose that idea, I think it's, I think it'll work.
It's sometimes hard to get things done, but.
Well, also, I will resend this email out with my proposal, um. I don't want to.
I feel like they, I don't know, they're paying fifty-two, I thought in our last joint meeting, they acted like they're gonna pay more, but maybe not.
Well, they, they put a budget together, it's my understanding, for what they wanted to pay this year, and divided by twelve, and that's what you get, that much, that fifty-two across the board there. But I mean, at the going rate, we're halfway through it, right, the, the year on, at June, and it's a hundred and forty-two thousand. If it would continue, just another six months, you could almost double that to maybe.
Three hundred thousand.
Yeah, one eighty, three hundred, two, you know, I don't know what other expenses may come out of dispatch, and it all depends on training and any overtime and four-week, extra pay weeks in there. But yeah, it, it could, and I'll be honest with you, counsel, we don't have that in our budget. I'm gonna tell you right now, there ain't no way, and that's gonna, that's gonna be the kicker for, for, for us, um, on this budget, not twenty-sixth. I'll reach out to, uh, the county, and I'll resend this proposal unchanged. If this week sometime, I'm able, I will, either before that meeting or this week, I'll try to revise another, uh, spreadsheet at the bottom to reflect current numbers, where we're at now, are we on budget, what, you know, of my proposals, which number are we looking at dropping into if it's, you know, the shortfall side, and maybe that'll help, help it some. So I'll have to plug those in and see what I got. You all should have a copy of this, I can resend it to, I know sometimes stuff gets pushed down in emails and we all get busy. Um, if you want a paper copy, I'd be glad to make you copy this and print it out.
Paper copy, put it, I want it in my box down there.
Not a problem. I can, um, send you copies of the emails of correspondence if you want to, if that helps, and you already got this copy here, so. I'll reach out to the county this week and see what we can do to schedule a joint meeting. Um, if it's okay, I'd like to have it at the county play, uh, courthouse. They just, it seemed like at the last meeting, they had a lot more seating because they have that long counter, even though it's, the counter makes it hard because you can't look anyone, you're always looking way down and can't hear people as well, but, um, they have better seating for us, and I know their audio probably works better in harnesses right now, I hope it's, I know it's not very loud, I'm sorry. I'll, I'll reach out to them, it'll probably be, obviously it won't be this week, the week after, if not even another week, but I've gotta see what their schedule's like too. I mean, I don't know if they have, what's going on, so. Is that okay? Bye, good, okay. Thank you for coming and discussing on it. Uh, it's a lot to understand, as Derek could tell you, it's, oh, man, I had no idea when I came into this office, how much you would learn about dispatch, and it's, it's been really good, honestly, learning it, it's, it's been, uh, other than just kind of the negativity that's been along with it for a while. Alright, um, moving on to Mayor's report. It's Fitzer Fest Week, um, so glad that it's here, it's a, it's a great time to showcase our community, welcome visitors and, and family in, and, and have a good time, so. Hope everybody has a safe and fun time this year. Um, I'm gonna put a little plug in for the half-pot, get you half-pot tickets, you know?
I got some.
Did you get some?
I made my donation.
We did too.
Good, so, uh, last I checked, it was a thirteen, fourteen?
Fourteen thousand.
Around fourteen thousand. Uh, they do sell them, uh, just down here in the bottom, lower part of City Hall. Um, just to go over to, um, we do have, we did have a Cinco de Bell. Derek was, I thought he was lying to me this morning, I thought you were lying, I didn't, I still didn't believe him. So if you notice a steel plate in the intersection of Mozart and Main, there's a Cinco de Bell. Of all places, the greatest place.
One this week.
It was a wor- like, not the worst, I mean, I guess in the middle of the beer garden, it might have been worse, but it's still, eh, yeah, that's, that's not funny, but. Do what? Bill says it.
Did he really?
Your dad, it's probably your dad did it, he probably was trying to drive a T-post on the ground and hit a pipe. We'll blame him.
What?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Before we adjourn, no, I, I just have one other item I wanted to mention, and it's kind of related to your last statement there. I, I've spent some time the last couple of weeks doing our water ordinances and our sewer ordinances, and I discovered in the sewer ordinance, the last one that was adopted or amended was in twenty eighteen, and it says in that particular ordinance that the council should do a rate study every three years, and to my knowledge, we have not done a sewer rate study since I've been on the council for six years.
It's like we did, but I don't remember, but I will look into that and find out. It's like we did, we done water. I know we did water, we did water twice, actually. Well, we did, and we did it even one more time before then, so, but I thought they done sewer at the same time, last time. Now, I don't know if it was most, the most recent one, but I'll find out, it's a good question.
Who sets that, right? Is it the council or the board?
You do, council does.
Paul and Philip.
The council does, yes. Um, last time I checked, you know, financially, they, they were doing, doing much, doing okay, uh, I haven't noticed any shortfalls.
I think in the last water rate, it was discussed and recommended, but no rate at this time.
For water, or, um, sewer, yeah. Well, let me double check and find out. Um, might remind me, but I will look into that. And get answers. I'm glad you brought it up, though, it's still worth looking into, knowing where you stand. Alright, so I have nothing else, um, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Brian, is there a second? By Philip, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, we can adjourn.